Always forget. All right, now we will call the July eighth regular council meeting to order at seven oh three P M. Please rise to the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, there are no proclamations or presentations tonight. So we'll go to public petitions, communications and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the council with a two minute limit. We will go to those in the room first. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
George Jacob.
All right, George.
Hi, George fishing game road. So seeing the appropriations. For not very active. It's had my foundation done last year and you're looking for more than three times what a foundation cost for basketball courts. Ridiculous. So we're getting three bids. How are we coming up with this stuff and what are we, what are we planning with gold? I mean, my foundation had to be dug up, my basement had to be empty, my house had to be listed. Ten tractor trailer loads of concrete hauled out. New foundation, all the stuff that goes along with it, hundred and seventy thousand, and you can pay for three foundations here for, for basketball courts? How about giving us taxpayers a break or put it on a roads, it's resurface of roads. Instead of all this waste and I'm not having the price of the tractor, that's hard to believe also, we get competitive quotes on all this stuff. I saw the thing running. A few months ago, it looked like it was in fine shape. We replace it just because it's old. I'd like to know some of the specifics on why this stuff is happening. But this basketball court stuff is ridiculous. Sure. And we always say parks and recs aren't costing any money, park and rec they covering this is, us taxpayers are covering this. And by the time you put what five, 10 year note on it, what's the interest on that? That's a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Point clarification. To Jacob.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Point clarification.
Yeah.
Roadside payment. For the town?
No, I'm talking about the
Thank you. Thanks Jacob.
Yep, and we'll talk more about this item in a little bit here for the public hearing. Okay, I'll go online. Is there anyone online who'd like to make up public comment tonight? I'm not seeing anyone. I'll go to the room.
I'm Steven six eight nine Thomas stage road. I don't know anything about the cost of basketball court, okay? But I will say much to my amazement, every time I go to that park, every time I drive by it to go to skunk and move to the range, there's kids out playing. Okay, I am shocked if you want to know in today's day and age that there's kids actually out shooting hoops at a basketball court. So again, I don't know anything about the cost structure, but the fact that there's kids that go outside these days at any type of weather. And your kids out there like in the winter time, regardless of whether they're out there, at least a handful playing. And you know, I guess that you can look at cost benefit maybe, but my view is anything that gets kids together off their phones and outside is a positive. So again, don't know about the cost structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, we'll go back to the, or back to the online world. Anybody on Zoom would like to speak? I go back to the room. Go back online. Go back to the room one more time. Go online one more time. All right, not seeing anybody, we will close out public participation. And we will go to a public hearing item. We do have a public hearing tonight. Consideration of our resolution appropriating three hundred four thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars for roadside mower acquisition. Appropriating two hundred seventy seven thousand two hundred dollars for truck acquisition and appropriating five hundred sixty five thousand. For basketball court replacement and authorizing the issue of up to one million one hundred forty seven thousand fifty five dollars in bonds and notes to finance the appropriation. The way we'll handle this tonight is I'll have, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Then I'll turn it over to Brian, you and Yolitza, if they'd like to provide any background upon those items. And then we'll turn it over to the community who may speak on this topic. Unlike normal public participation, there is no time limit. On this public hearing so long as the comments are germane to the topic. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So move second.
Okay, who's, who's moved, who made that motion? I didn't.
Chris.
Okay. All right, and councillor Noonan seconded it.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, not seeing any councillor Noonan. Councillor BB.
Hi.
Councillor Moran.
Hi.
I think I saw councillor Buckler join councillor Buckler. Swear I saw her join.
She, she's six, I guess her wifi is going in and out.
Oh, so she might not be connected right now. All right, we do have a quorum, so I'll, I'll go I as well, and that opens the public hearing.
Okay, thank you Chair. This is something we cover every year. Every year when we have to go out to debt and based on our capital plan. We carefully consider how we're going to move forward. We basically do it on a five year plan, but look further out. We have this year, we, the things we're going to go out to debt for are roadside mower, those are the debts that, it is a tractor with a hydraulic arm. That trims these, the road, the sides of the roadways throughout town. We have a large dump truck, also plow that we're going to be replacing as well as two basketball courts, Herring Cove and Crandles. In order to save money, we are doing it, the five sixty, around five hundred dollars to do a basketball court, the concrete is what it costs. In order to save money, we're doing it in asphalt so that we can get two of the courts done. The courts are all currently asphalt right now. We'll look to improve ADA in the area as well when we do do this. With us, I have our finance director as well as our bond counsel, our people who are financial advisors and bond counsel who help us. Plan out this debt within a most responsible way for the town of talent. I also have Scott Lappin here, our DPW director, if you have any questions about the equipment and such, I can tell you that we had a DPW consultant report done. Two years ago. These acquisitions are well within the consultant reports, in fact, it exceeds both, the piece of equipment exceed the recommendations. Of how long we should hold on based on years and time of use in replacing the equipment. I believe we get the stuff off the equipment off a state bid, is that right Scott?
Yes.
So we, so we, you know, it's the, it's the lowest bid that we can get based on the, the state process given to us. And so now that, that's what we have to go with the, the public hearing, entertain, not any questions from council as well.
All right. I guess first I'll go to councillors and maybe we can get as many clarifying questions out of the way first. Any councillors have questions?
Yeah, Jacob, I have a couple.
Yes.
Um, with respect to the basketball courts, um, I, we decided to go asphalt over the concrete to save some funds. Can you talk at all about, I know we are sort of anecdotal about the use of them, you know, how old are they, like, do they, do we have any idea of how much use they're getting?
The use would be affected by the terrible condition in which they're in. You remember when we went over the capital plan, we provided pictures of what they are despite that, despite all the patching and the, and the crack sealing. And such as the residents stated, they're getting used a lot. The public sentiment for replacing the basketball courts that I've received is, is very, very, very positive. As far as kids getting out there playing, so they're, they're at least twenty years old. Scott, do you have any idea how, how old these things are?
They're at least one.
Yeah, at least one. And if you go, you just, you just need to go look at them and see that they, they need repair. They're uneven, there's cracks, sealed cracks, sealed patches. It's creating walkways going into them, you know, it's, it's time.
Yeah, and I, I'll, I'll say, we, we have talked about these items during the capital budget process. And I, thank you for reminding me of the photos. They, they were in rough shape. Is there is there a safety concern as well about, you know, having, making sure that the, the courts aren't, you know, just repaired for being getting a picture?
I'm not sure there is a liability. I think it's at your own risk thing, but I mean, it would get to a point where you're responsible for not fixing them certainly. We keep them in decent repair and they're literally repairs, just cracks everywhere.
Thank you.
Councillor Moran.
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks.
Yep. Anybody else questions? I think I saw councillor Noonan's hand.
Yeah, I have a question. So in regards to the ADA specifically, branding language or steps to, or be looking to have a rate come down?
Come down to, we are always looking to push the needle on ADA access. The steps there are a disaster going down there and it's into the parking lot, you know, that we have discussed within the last week. What we're going to do about that. As far as getting a ramp down there, those are all, all things we will look to do. If you look at, we already, I believe we already approved the walkway to the basketball court at Harry Cole while the basketball court hasn't been approved yet. And the pickleball courts, which was the hockey, right, now we put
Right.
Walks to those too as well. So it is something we'll consider. It's just going to have to be engineered. There's some major problems there.
And then when it comes to the roadside, or I always know that, you know, you'll go through town utility with a sign, you just call.
Yep.
And try to see, does it really need to be replaced? And so can we fix it? Is this to the point where it's past repair and more labor to fix it? I mean, how old?
It becomes, he can, Scott will tell you that it becomes a point where it, it costs more to fix it. You start to be able not to be able to find parts. And it costs more to fix it than it does to, to start funding and do it, Scott.
One of the issues, um, it was approximately five years ago. The hydraulic pump, which is inside the tractor, when we had to send it out, it was down for six weeks. It was thirty five thousand five hundred dollars to replace the pump and some pieces of the clutch assembly we could see they were wearing. It wasn't worth putting it back together without addressing the clutch and then finding out two or three months later that one, take it all apart again. The value of it right now is above twenty five thousand maximum for traded. We spent thirty five to fix it. It's, it's past, it's, I mean, my mechanics do a great job keeping all of our but this, as Brian said, it's, it's a boom mower, it was up and over the guardrails, goes up at those banks. It's in very difficult conditions all day long. There isn't two days that it's not in the shop having something fixed, whether it's smaller or the
Is it a Toro? Do you know the year of the?
It's a, yeah, it's a John Deere mower.
Okay.
And it's fifteen years old, nine hundred, nine thousand five hundred hours.
Right.
Truck is seventeen years old, sixty five thousand mile corrode, serious corrosion from salt.
And then what were you planning on? Going for a new unit, Scott?
We would, we'd go on state did, see what would apply to us the best, whether it's John Deere, New Holland.
So similar to the roadside. As far as sourcing a new?
Yes.
Set up, that all councillor Noonan?
Yeah, do you think, and going out to bid, do you have an idea of what a new unit would, would cost?
For the, the roadside mower, yeah, it's, it's approximately three or four, three hundred thousand, we might be able to get it for less prices that come down. You know, and if we can get that twenty five for trade. That'll be applied right to it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from councillors? Councillor BB?
Yeah, thank you. Can you just give us a little bit more for the benefit of, of the public? The process by which we come to the final pricing for the materials that we procure. So for the truck, for the mower, I know you, you're saying that you use the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services list. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, either, either that or there are other consortiums like Sourcewell, which is inappropriate. It collector, if you will. So there, there are other ones. We could even use other states, other towns. So we go out and we look at, when we're, when we're dealing with different vendors. They'll say, we can get state good for this, but if you use Sourcewell, we can save a little more money, depending on what we get on it for.
So these are sites where vendors will go in and say, okay, we've got this equipment, we're willing to sell it to you, this is how much it's going to cost. And then you can take your pick from, from those, from that, that list of available machines. And what if you don't see something other that meets your needs is then do you solicit from other, do you put like an out and art of request proposal or how do you deal with that?
Well, for something, if the debt costs are purchasing guidelines, say we have to have a sealed bid, so we're going to have to put together specs.
Yeah.
And then look for sealed bids.
Okay, so then they, so if you don't see something there that you can work with, then you, you solicit steel bids and then you take the best value. Okay, and the same thing for the, I'm assuming for the basketball court. Work, right? That this would go out onto the street and, and to request bids for that work.
If, I believe we're going to go off a state contract with that as well. Gordian, I believe we use, are going to use to do that. They just switched contractors, put it through the, the state. That we would procure that as well.
Okay.
Trying to get the best price. If they couldn't do it, then we would go through that same, exact same bidding process. The life expectancy for a basketball court, if painted, sealed, cracked sealed, at least every five years is twenty years. We are, I'm just well beyond that on both those courts and I'm sure we'll get well beyond it again this time as well because we maintain a pretty
Okay, and who, who supervises the installation of that? Is that our public works? Do you, do you directly supervise that?
We have a project manager, Megan Masa, who would, would do it, we would team approach whenever we do any project, much like the parks garage or the firehouse. I have, I ask Director Lappin and Jim Packman, our inspector, to keep an eye on everything there when they do it, they, they keep a close.
Okay, thank you. And, and, and just, so for those of us who work with, within the DAF structure, this is a big list of vendors and construction companies and specialists that, that bid to the state, the state will open up and say, here are these items, give us your best prices. And everybody throws their hat and ring and provides prices and municipalities and the state itself can choose from them when they need work to be done. So that's Yeah, it's just like a standing list. That's good for a certain period of time, right?
Believe they do it every year or every two years.
Yeah, I think so too. I, I Okay, thank you. What? Appreciate clearing that up.
Thank you. Um, I just have one question for Bobby Berry. And Yolitza, if this goes through, when would the debt actually be issued? And when would the decisions be made about like the length of the, of the bonds?
I'm happy to, evening. So we are planning to issue the BMS and we're looking just at the interest rate, the schedule, what that involves and in a pat, last year we didn't issue any events or bonds, so we were able to kind of use our cash in order to be of some products. So right now we are looking at probably issuing November. And issuing the short notes, the dance, what we call, and that's kind of a plan right now.
Okay.
Barry can jump in.
Yes, you're absolutely right. We're looking in, in November to issue short term notes for one year to get money into the bank so the town can work on the projects. And then in November of twenty six, to reassess how much of that money has been spent and to decide at that point in time if it's ready to do a permanent financing or a bond issue at that point in time.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if councillor Buckler is able to get on.
Just, she's gone. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right, so if there's no other questions from councillors, let's, I'll turn it over to the public. As I mentioned, this is not a regular public participation session, so speak for as long as you like on this topic. I'll go to the room first. I'll go online. I'll go back to the room. George?
We're going fish game road. Still not happy. I'd like to know, do we do a survey of all our parks and things? Our town population is down over a thousand. Our school population is down nine hundred. Do we need all these parks, basketball courts, and you're nice to have. But bottom line is, can we afford them? We have more important things to spend our money on. Let's start having people pay in if they want to use it more. That's because somewhere we've got to come up with just five hundred and seven thousand dollars. We have some people in town that seem it's no problem to just throw money. Yes, I got my tax bill and tax bills and I don't have it. So I can't throw more because kids want to play in the park. It's all well and good. We say let's have certain people donate money so kids can play. But let's count our money and use it wisely. I would like to know how many courts we have, how many basketball, how many ball fields, are we using them all? We use them wisely so that we can eliminate some. Our park and rec department is too big, too much overhead. All these other things that go on like this, all cost money. It doesn't, parks and recs don't cover that, taxpayers cover that. So we need to think about where we're putting our money and being on a limited, but if you read the paper the last two or three days. People leaving Connecticut in droves. It only got worse since the first of the year. Everybody's going to where the manufacturing. They, they had a heck of a time just keeping brat money in, in the state because they opened a new plant now in, in North Carolina. So other than electric boat, everybody else is looking to leave this state. So we have to be really, take serious consideration as to where we're spending our money and why we're spending our money. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go online. I see Nicholas Miller has raised his hand. We can unmute him.
Nicholas Miller, fifty five Hilltop Road. I would just like to push back on what George is talking about. I think, I think our parks are, you know, important aspect to our town. I, I really appreciate them and I appreciate the work you're doing to kind of help keep them serviced and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back to the room. I'll go back online. Laura Cassenti has raised her hand. Can we unmute Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura Cassenti. I'm also at fifty five Hilltop Road. And I wanted to speak out in support of the parks here in town. I run a fundraiser walk every year that brings, excuse me, I'm a little nervous. It brings people from all over, from other states, other towns here to our town. And when they come here, they spend money here. So our town gets money by having the parks in town. They spend money at businesses. So I want to speak in support of keeping our parks in good order. And I want to thank the town council members for the hard work that they're doing and for the town too for doing that. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back to the room. Go back online. Go back to the room. Go back online one more time. I'll go to the room one more time. Right, seeing no public, no additional public comment for the public hearing. Believe we do have a motion or a resolution that is proposed for adoption. So I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the draft resolution. Authorizing the issuing of the bonds for this plan.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment, Jacob, if I could.
If it's quick, that's fine, then we can.
So just to kind of address with George, your, the question that you asked George. So we have Herring Cove, which has soccer fields. Birch Row has a softball field and an upper utility field. There's a trap that encapsulates that field now. Middle school has football, softball, baseball, to utilize a front field for lacrosse, I believe. Collin High has football, baseball, softball, lacrosse and then practice field adjacent to the, the big baseball diamond. TIS has a field. I don't think, I don't know if they utilize that anymore for, for sports. Crandles here has a baseball diamond and a men's upper softball. And then Crandles Upper has a baseball diamond as well. I think that the only one, Brian, that really doesn't have as much use anymore is River Park. Which is on the other half of Wellington. Right?
Lots of baseball use there.
There is.
Yes.
So we have quite a few, but it was really just to answer that question, how many fields we have for use.
Thank you. Is there a councillor who would like to motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution?
So.
Right, moved by councillor Moran, I believe. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor BB. Is there any additional discussion by council?
Yeah, Jacob, I just have one
Yep.
I wanted to confirm with, so this the appropriations are being asked to consider here, this is what was included in the five year capital budget recently passed as part of our overall budget, correct?
Five year capital plan discussed in council prior to, and then again through the budget process as well, discussed in late winter. And then also in the budget that we just passed, yes.
So it's backed it and it's not going to, this won't you know, further impact the mill rate, anything beyond, but you know, what the question that, that, that asked, we can reach that. Okay, thank you.
Just a clarifying question, Jacob, on councillor Moran, I should how many of these, these parks that we're looking at here, how much of this was, any, are allocated to this? No, no.
Yeah, maybe just clarify a little bit upon that. Are, all of our ARPA funds have been appropriated. And the deadline for further appropriations for that has lapsed. So fortunately, there's no more of that money. So, so requires debt. Although as councillor Moran pointed out, this already passed referendum. This is not in addition to the budget, just a quirk of our system that there is a additional public hearing after referendum has been adopted by voters to appropriate capital that requires debt. Any other comments? Right, we'll go around for a roll call vote. Councillor BB?
Hi.
Councillor Moran?
Hi.
Councillor Noonan?
Hi.
I don't know if Jen joined. I'm an I.
I don't think so.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. All right. Moving right along to seven A reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Councillor BB, is there a report from the Firehouse Subcommittee?
We have a meeting next week, so there's, there's nothing to report right now.
All right. Brian, is there any? Um Brian, is there any news uh from EHHD or CROG?
Negative.
Right? Don't think I'm missing anybody. Or that item. Um contaminated wells has not met. So we'll go to reports of town council liaisons. Um start with Counselor Noonan.
Yeah, so this is gonna be kind of like the uh. Description here. So Talon Conservation Commission has a photo contest. Um the submission deadline is September thirtieth of this year. Um and the winner will be announced in October um twenty twenty five. So there's three categories. It'll be uh wildlife. Forehand fauna, um of Talon Open Spaces. A natural landscape photography of Talon Open Spaces and then uh the third category will be people enjoying Talon's open spaces. Um there's a few age categories. So youth will be sixteen years old or younger. Adult will be seventeen years uh old or older. So two adult and two junior winners will be chosen for each photo category. Um winners will be awarded a Talon Conservation twenty twenty-six calendar each room. All of them's work. Sorry. So the information to be noted, to be included with your submission is the photographer's name, date of birth. Uh photographer's address, email uh and phone number, the photo location date. And the photo category of your submission. If anybody has any further questions with that, um feel free to reach out uh either myself or Brian. If you can help me with that. Um that's all, yeah.
Thank you. Sounds fun. I think there've been some pretty good pictures in the past, so exciting. Um Counselor Moran.
Uh the uh historic district commission hasn't been vetted since our last meeting, so I don't have any.
Alright. Counselor Beebe.
Um Planning and Zoning Commission does not meet until the fourteenth. Um of July and uh I believe the public hearing will continue at that point. On the proposed uh changes uh to the residential regulations for rear lots.
Thank you. Um so Counselor Buckler, join.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm traveling for work. Um I have nothing to report.
Alright. That leaves me. Um I also don't have anything to report. Um Economic Development Commission did meet, but I was away and unable to attend. Right, um. Moving on to new business, uh first item, business is appointment of a member to the town council. Brian and Chris, I guess.
Uh I'll just say a couple of words in front if you if you want. So um given uh Councilor Yudich's resignation, um. Town clerk notified the Democratic Town Committee that um that we need to endorse somebody to fill that vacancy. Um and so uh we were fortunate enough that um John Grady uh was willing to step forward and volunteer. Uh you know, his time uh and expertise to the community. Um and so he was um unanimously endorsed by the Talon DTC. Um I'll just note that um John is a communication professional for thirty years. I think he began his career um as a journalist. Um he's a small business owner in town. Um he's been a resident for over fifteen years. Um he's got two kids in the school system, so. Um he's vested in the 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 future of our town and um I think he'll be um an asset to the to the to the council.
Thanks. Uh and uh in addition to your bracket is the resignation letter of uh Colleen Yudichek. We thank her uh for her service. Also in the packet is a letter uh from the Talon Democratic Town Committee uh recommending uh recommending. Mister Ganey, just sort of the. Grady, thank you, sorry. Uh it's and uh our town clerk is available here to swear him in in advance. Of uh his swearing in, he's been provided with a a list of uh resources and instruction. Uh to assist him with smooth transition. He also met with me for roughly an hour and a half. Uh we went over a lot of town business. Uh prior to that swearing in, so uh the transition should be seamless and and we wish him the best of luck. Should you should counsel approve it.
Thank you. Alright, um. Just no additional comment. Um I'll entertain a motion to adopt the draft resolution and agenda item eight one.
I'll make that motion. Oop, I'll second it then.
Okay. Um motion has been made. Is there any additional discussion?
Jacob, real quick.
Yes.
I just um I just want to say on behalf of the Talon Democratic Town Committee, um he was uh approved unanimously. Um we're happy to have another unaffiliated candidate. Um Mister Granny's been really active in the town. He's really taken a huge interest in um you know, current politics in um in Talon and um has really. Actually added to a lot of meaningful discussions um as of lately, so uh we're happy to see him on town council.
Thank you, Counselor Buckler. Alright, and Counselor Buckler, um how do you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a yay or an I.
I kind of sprung that on you, so that's no problem.
Thanks, Jacob.
Yeah, uh Counselor Noonan.
Aye.
Counselor Moran.
Aye.
Counselor Beebe.
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so that uh resolution is adopted unanimously. Uh congratulations, Counselor Grady. Um I think now would make sense to s- uh swear him in.
Yep, you do that, thank you. I think the honor of town clerk would do that, Jacob.
You solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut. As well as the Charter and ordinances of the town Talon and to faithfully discharge your duties. As a member of the Talon Town Council to the best of your abilities, so help you God.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Apologies that I'm unable to be there in person. Uh Counselor Grady, I've had. Mechanical issues and I'm stuck in Michigan indefinitely until that's fixed. Um but glad to have you on the council and please let me know um. You know, if you'd like to meet or if you've got any questions. I know we have to um figure out uh what. Boards and committees um you'd like to be a liaison to. I know there's some vacancies left by Counselor Yudichek. So, we'll have to do that in short order, but congratulations.
Thank you. Uh I'd like just uh thank uh Counselor Yudichek for her uh. Her devotion to the town and her many years of service. Um you know, this wouldn't, I wouldn't be here if it weren't for. Uh her sacrifice and uh I appreciate what she's done for the town and uh. I hope I can uh fill the shoes.
Thank you. Alright. Well, that will move on to the first um business item. Now the council is is once again whole. Um item eight two, consideration of a resolution to approve the revised uh revised ambulance fund policies and procedures. Brian, uh I'll turn it over to you. It looks like our attorney um reviewed it and it made changes based up on the last meeting we had.
Correct, so this is our our ambulance fund. Uh we take it, take money in, uh basically uh through the work of our ambulances. We're through a law in the state of Connecticut allowed to bill out. Like if there's an accident on eighty-four and such, we can take money in, the fire department, the ambulance will respond to those things. Uh billing is based off of that. We use an outside vendor to do the the billing. This is a uh policy to uh. More clearly define uh how that money can be used. Attached to your uh your packet is a copy of the policy with all the red line changes. Everything in here has been uh reviewed and approved uh by our town attorney, Rick Conti. And it's it's to town council now for a decision to forward.
Thank you. Um any questions from counselors, comments?
Uh Jacob, uh just note, uh thank you um and uh to Attorney Conti for. The making the uh the changes that we talked about uh last meeting to the ambulance policy. Um in particular, I think subsection D, um just to sort of uh big clear that we're enshrining what. Um the sort of existing practices have been with the use of the ambulance balls, uh ambulance fund policy. Uh just enshrining that into a formal policy. So uh thank you for uh for having.
Absolutely. Yep, and yeah, I mean just for Counselor Grady's benefit, um this really won't change how the current ambulance fund policy is used in in town. We're we're very blessed with um very competent administrators that do a great job. This essentially just um enshrines the best practices that they're already performing. Any other comments or questions? That'll um entertain a motion to adopt the policy as drafted. Moved by Counselor Beebe, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Uh Counselor Noonan.
Aye.
Counselor Moran.
Aye.
Counselor Beebe.
Aye.
Counselor Buckler.
Aye.
Oh, I forgot, Counselor Grady.
Aye.
Alright, and I'm an I as well, so that uh resolution and policy is adopted. Alright. Moving along to item eight four, um or no, sorry, E three. Consideration or a resolution to set the threshold of a new ambulance fund reserve account. I'll turn it over to Brian and Yulita.
Okay, Yulita, you want to you want to run and define exactly that. It's basically, you know, in order to. If we exceed a certain amount in that fund, we have to go to town council for approval.
Uh so um as we spoke a few times before, um with the five-year plan. We are going to be leaving with like seventy-five thousand dollars in that fund. Based on our estimates, based on what we're collecting on ambulance feed through the fiscal year. This year, um we have, well, we're closing fiscal year, so I don't have the exact number, so that number probably going to increase. And again, then the first time we review the situation and we talk about capital plan, we presented the five-year spending for that ambulance fund. And at that time, we think after five years, it was only fifteen thousand dollars left. Again, as we go through the fiscal year, that number changes, it's increasing and we, when we do. Um projection, how much revenue we collect, we are very conservative. So that's up to you how you'll, what the threshold would you would like to, you know, set. But again, right now, it's, you know, again, that balance is increasing.
Thank you. I'll um I'll just make a quick comment um here. I I I appreciate getting the whole list of expenditures that we saw. Regarding the use of the fund over the past couple of years. My my personal thoughts on it, I don't think that the threshold should be very high because otherwise we're kind of just handcuffing. Or locking money in a box, you know, unnecessarily. I think what might make sense is just. Setting it so that there's at least a little money for for like a small emergency expense that might pop up. I think the smallest one I saw. Um that might be a good good benchmark was like fifteen thousand for um, it was like some uh. Um personal protective equipment. Um I'm I'm not going to use the right term. Um but but some sort of a of. Firefighter gear, so that that that's kind of where my head is in terms of a threshold, but open other thoughts uh from council. The Counselor Moran.
Yeah, so I just uh just did just to clarify, so um. What we're doing here is under subsection C, we're talking about the threshold amount that we need to fund the policy and sort of the minimum amount that we're going to be keeping in there. And so uh I agree with you, um Jeremy Murray, about uh not wanting to set that threshold too high. Which then handcuffs, you know, us from being able to actually use the money for for what it's intended to be used for. Um and uh the fifteen thousand amount sounds reasonable. Um I just can't recall, Yuli, do you remember? If um in the last handful of years, it had ever dropped below fifteen thousand?
I don't remember, but I'm happy to look into that.
No, it's it's quite, I I don't recall that it ever had.
I don't, I don't think it has, okay. I don't even think it's been closed, but.
Yeah, no, so I think that's probably a safe.
We've bought because every fiscal year as we close, we transfer that ambulance fund revenues. So it's over over two hundred thousand dollars.
Right. And it and this is, it's funded with the money that's used, that, I mean, we've talked about this, but when the fire department, you know, goes out to eighty-four or whatever and they're, and they, you know, have to render. For dent currency, that's going to be fun, that's get about money. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or opinions from counselors? Nice, I'm not seeing any. I I don't know. Counselor Moran, if you want to make a make a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion to. Set the threshold amount uh for the uh recently adopted ambulance fund policy. Um of like to see at fifteen thousand dollars.
A second by Counselor Beebe. Any additional discussion? Alright, um. Counselor uh Noonan.
Aye.
Counselor Moran.
Aye.
Counselor Beebe.
Aye.
Counselor Grady.
Aye.
Uh Counselor Buckler.
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so that passes. And we are making good time here tonight. Note, I item eight four. I know, I really should keep my mouth shut. Um review of town council goals that were last updated on December tenth, twenty twenty-four. Brian?
Uh thank you, Chair. So uh for for those who are are new to council within the last two years. Uh two years ago, we're each, when each, whenever time we have a new council, uh we review goals, uh and set goals and and then review them uh yearly. Or is it every six months? I believe it's every six months.
Three times during the council term.
Three times during your term, we review them. Uh this will be the final one. Uh and these are your goals as set by the council uh two years ago. Uh a lot of things can change in two years and I'm just going to run through. Attached in your packet is a thorough. Review and some data and such attached to or when appropriate for each item. Uh so I'm just going to kind of run through if that's all you have any questions at the end, I'm happy to uh entertain it. This will cover a lot of stuff that. Be the town manager's for a lot of updates as well, but uh let me begin. Uh number one, provide quality, uh high-quality services in a fiscally responsible way, support the town manager and various stakeholders. Exploring the idea of a new strategic plan. Uh so the the strategic plans are great. We have a uh P O C D plan uh already. It's due for an update in twenty twenty-nine. It's every ten years. Uh our town planner is uh starting to work on that currently as we speak. Uh the uh P O C D is similar to a strategic plan. Uh to do a strategic plan uh two years ago, uh the 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 cost estimate was between fifty and eighty thousand dollars to hire a firm to come in and come up. With a strategic plan. I think we're all painfully familiar with the budget restraints. There was no room for us to to hire out to do a strategic plan. Uh unfortunately, in this year's budget. Uh if council were to uh be committed to doing a strategic plan, again, I would recommend around sixty thousand dollars. Next year's budget uh to do that. I will obviously await your direction uh to see where you go. Uh B succession planning, main uh maintaining, continuing. Uh we've been very fortunate in the town of Talon, uh as we saw tonight. Uh that we're that we're going to, we're going to hire a new rec director. We had thirty applicants uh in there. Uh we have done well in regards to so many departments are uh you you know, Yulita, of course, is a fantastic. Example of of successful succession that we've uh incorporated here. If we can't do it within. We've done very well through our interviews and background processes to hire the 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 most quality candidates. I am exceptionally pleased with every hire uh I've uh and that I've had happen under me of over the last three plus. Years to improve the culture here. We are a small town. We have small departments. We nest don't necessarily have succession. Room of of a pool of, you know, assistants and uh people that that could uh replace. Uh one example is our our town clerk, our assistant town clerk is retiring. We we post, we are posting for that currently. When posting for that, he, one of the things we look for is not just to get someone and fill in, but we looked down the road, five years, ten years. How long is our current clerk going to be there? So in hiring this town clerk, we want somebody that is going to want to stay here in the town a long time. Eventually could become our permanent town clerk. That is a central focus uh of our hiring. We've made some promotions internally within DPW that have been outstanding and and I I can't tell you. The amount of compliments I get in so many different directions in having these uh new, you know, for lack of a better term, young blood. Uh kids come in with with computer savvy, technology savvy, uh that that these were internal people that showed. Above and beyond, worked so hard. Wanted these promotions and got our DPW directors happy. Uh I am, I am happy. Uh but we have done, I've been very fortunate here. Um in our our succession and will continue uh to look forward to that. As discussed earlier, C, ARPA finalized the funds, ensure execution of all funds by a by deadline. The last current remaining ARPA project is the DPW garage. It is moving in budget, uh hopefully ahead of schedule. Uh once that's finalized, we'll be able to to finish everything. At the bottom line is all, every, the entire amount of our uh ARPA funds. At the bottom line is all, every, the entire amount of our, of ARPA funds were encumbered by the December twenty twenty-four deadline, uh, and we are not expecting any leftover funds, uh, from that project. Thanks, uh, many thanks to the ARPA, ARPA committee, uh, which I was a part of, uh, and, uh, we, I think, spent that money in a very responsible way. Save taxpayers' money by prioritizing strong fiscal policies such as our triple A bond rating. Uh, we have been successful over the last, uh, one and a half years, as this council has been here, but it's the three years since I've been here in, in maintaining our strong fiscal policies. Our strong policies are, uh, what make, uh, really lead to, uh, the basis behind our strong triple A rating. Our town is not necessarily a triple A town, but we are, we are very good about maintaining our fiscal policies, uh, staying within our guardrails, uh, and making sure that we stay strong. We going out to debt as, as we discussed earlier in November, we going through the rating process again. Uh, you know, again, we are very, are very, a town very close to losing the triple A bond rating, uh, but hopefully we can maintain it again for, uh, another year. Supporting pay-as-you-go policies, we have a, uh, in for capital expenses. We have a capital plan, uh, we planned it out to, to get that fiscal year twenty twenty-nine, we can really start, uh, doing pay-as-you-go, uh, items through our capital plan. Each year, we kind of nibble away at that, you know, this year you saw us push some stuff out of the capital plan in order to get the budget, uh, passed, I get it, uh, but, but we, that maintains the central focus for us and Yulitza's obviously, uh, very invested in making sure that, uh, we, we maintain our debt as, as best as possible and, and move to pay as you go. Explore regional services, uh, to find cost savings. The current one we're chasing down is, uh, regional, um, animal control officers and, and a regional animal control facility. Uh, as you, as you may have heard, uh, we got state bonding for our animal control facility. Like a year and a half ago, the state, our, our cultural came in, made all kinds of rules for our animal control facility in regards to, uh, basically, uh, the housing of the, the, the animals is, um, humane and, and, uh, as comfortable as possible within reason. Uh, those changes are forcing a lot of towns to have to rebuild their facility, as are we. Uh, we went out for Steve or Losif, one of the two, we didn't get it at any rate, but thankfully our state representative, uh, got it on, uh, got it approved by the bond commission. Now hopefully we can get it on the, the big hurdle, getting it on the agenda. Uh, this is, these are state mandated changes, so hopefully that helps. Having it be regionalized, hopefully that helps get it on the agenda as well as we look to, uh, move with Willington and Stafford and hopefully to expand, um, to Ashford as well. I thank Ben, Ben and Masa in Krag, uh, who is really spearheading, uh, this regional effort and, and moving it forward. Um, we, and, and I remember, uh, person, maybe you had asked about what other, uh, regionalization services we have. Uh, we have, we have our regional, we use South Windsor's IT basically here in town. If you don't have our own IT department, we use South Windsor's and it, we've achieved great savings. You could not, never afford to have our own IT department. Uh, we share and borrow our fire marshal and building inspector with other towns, uh, as needed and, and we either, when, when ours needs help, they also, the town send somebody over and will vice versa support there. We use a regional health department, Eastern Highland Health District. We could never afford our own, um, health district or health department here in town and never get the, uh, the benefit that we get from this, this, uh, the Eastern Highland Health District for the, for the money that we pay. You know, our town hall, uh, supports the region's probate court, much to the benefit of our residents. Uh, we also use, uh, the Connecticut State Police and resident troopers. Uh, we're, we are becoming, uh, accredited here in town to make it easier to hire SROs, uh, constables or to form, uh, a regional department, say we'd like the town to burn. Uh, our, our public safety provides regional resources as needed and we take regional, regional resources as, as needed. Uh, and we're also, uh, looking at, uh, combining at, at some point someday our board of that and town, uh, finance departments by, while not regional, would certainly, uh, you know, combine the two departments hopefully to achieve, um, savings. Utilize and leverage data from, uh, G, utilizing rec, uh, and leverage data, but recommendations from DPW and public safety, uh, evaluations and studies are consulted, of course, we had a public safety consultant report just finished this year and a DPW one finished, um, last year. Look, we'd love to employ all the recommendations made in those, um, reports. The realities of our, uh, our fiscal realities do not allow us to do that. However, we can take some of the good recommendations or the cheaper recommendations and get moving in, in regards to like looking at the replacement of equipment, does it, does it benefit the town? Does it cost more of the town to get rid of equipment or forward? You know, we looked at DPW, do we have too much equipment? Do we have not enough equipment? Uh, we were in a good place, uh, based on that report. And, uh, there's some major things with the, with public safety down the road, kind of a ten-year-old type of thing where we would like to move to a one central fire department here in town, sell the one, uh, down, um, sell the land down, down on, uh, Merrill Road, where, where station one, two forty is, and, uh, find another location for it. We're considering, uh, the, the fields in the rear of Parker, the old Parker School or Parker Place. Um, that was also part of the public safety, uh, evaluation. But again, the fiscal, uh, realities, uh, always seem to hamper, uh, those well-intended consultant reports. Collect, uh, and base, collect baseline, uh, state trooper public safety data, you know, basically crime, is it up, is it down? Burglaries up, down compared to this year, compared to last month, compared, you know, compare it all around. Um, we are not getting almost no data from the, the resident state troopers or the state, the state police in regards to, um, crime in our town. I don't know if crime is up. None of our residents know if crime is up, no one knows if it's down, we don't know if burglary is up, we don't know what neighborhood burglaries occur, are they more likely to occur in a certain time of year in a certain area? We don't know the patrol patterns of our resident troopers based on that. Um, there's so much that we don't know. I am currently actively involved in another contract, we have a two-year contract that was up July first. I'm get, trying to get an MOU, uh, with the state police to establish that. There is some reluctance on the state police side, if they do this for the town of Talent, uh, then they would have to do it for all the resident trooper towns, uh, but as far as I know, the Ellington, uh, would love to have the, the stuff that I'm requesting from the state police as well. I think every resident trooper town would love it, I don't, I just don't know if they know that this type of data is available. In a previous career, I worked there, I know that data is readily available through their next-gen system, uh, easily obtained. My ask is that they provide it to town council and our town of Talent quarterly, uh, an updated, uh, crime or public safety report from our resident troopers. I to, uh, encourage resident troopers' involvement with the community. Um, our resident troopers do do a good job, uh, with our community. I, I see our, our new, our resident trooper is, is, her new administrative trooper Brennan is currently deployed. Uh, but he was fantastic and a temporary one is fantastic. I've watched him at events, uh, be it the, like the basketball games, the football games, uh, the harvest fest, anything. He is, they are not a sit-in-your-cruiser type of, uh, troopers that get out, they engage, they engage with the, the kids like I've never seen, Trooper Brennan is, is, uh, doing just an outstanding job with that. So I am, I am very happy and I thank the resident troopers, uh, for their efforts, uh, with that. And, and, and if I can just go back in regards to the data, the public safety data, establishing that MOU with the contract, uh, with the state police has nothing to do with our resident troopers here in town. That is the high-level stuff that is at the Department of Emergency Services and, and Public Protection, well above the heads of the, the troopers here, they're doing a great job as to what they're doing here. J, explore and support efforts to attract more businesses, the Santini Development's up and flying. Uh, the Tri-Town Gymnastics Center has been completed and is open. Uh, the town is working with the new owner of one fifty-nine Merrill Road, that's the, the former Berkshire Bank, it's a bank and basically across Big Y and it's going to be a, uh, basically a medical, uh, facility and leave of optometry and maybe other things as well. Uh, we have a new medical facility going in up of, good-sized medical facility going in up off Exit sixty-nine, uh, a car wash hopefully moving forward off of Exit sixty-eight. Uh, we have the Starbucks, uh, approved, but we're slow, they are very deliberate, we saw that in Ellington. We, we hope they open as soon as possible, be that as it may, we have a new coffee shop and a new diner, uh, also coming in, uh, to the area as well. Uh, EDC, uh, in town council revise the town's, uh, abatement policy, which is drawing interest from, uh, potential developers. Uh, K, review, review ordinance sixty, policy changes and increased communications to invite eligible residents to participate in the program. Ordinance sixty is basically a tax savings program for elderly. Uh, built into said ordinance is a periodic review, I believe every five years, we are basically reviewing it every year. Uh, we met, uh, recently to discuss, uh, how to review it and we are going to expand, uh, and, and after some consultation with some other, other, uh, sta- shared stakeholders, um, we'll look to expand that program and to get to, towards the max of where we want to be and how much we can afford to spend, uh, for saving that. Uh, responsibly manage town-owned properties, uh, and basically create an inventory and database of our town-owned properties and involve stakeholders in identifying opportunities for further land acquisition or unneeded property that could be sold to the public. So if we have all these pieces of land, a lot of public, uh, town-owned, uh, property around town that are just sitting on the books, it does nothing we can do, we are looking to fleece those off of our inventory and sell them or transfer them to, uh, property owners here in town. The town council, uh, made some adjustments to our, our policies to make it easier for us to, to, to do that. And, uh, we are going, we are moving forward with, I believe, four of them right off the bat. Uh, very positive feedback from the neighbors who are around those, uh, land, that, those areas, uh, and that'll be coming across town council soon. Promote sound infrastructure, advocate to replace and, uh, replace equipment and required infrastructure improvements in a timely manner in accordance with the capital improvement plan. Uh, this is kind of what we discussed in our public safety, I'm sorry, our public, uh, hearing that we just had in regards to, uh, replacing our capital equipment, replacing our buildings. Um, as you know, I don't want to buy anything, uh, I, I, and anything that pops up on our capital plan, I'm going out and seeing it, eyes on it, taking pictures to make sure, uh, that we do in fact, A, need it, uh, and, and B, it's, we're doing it in a timely and appropriate manner to do it. We would love to push everything off as far as possible. Uh, however, if we keep pushing things off and pushing things off, things down the road, there will be a cliff that will come eventually and, and that we have to pay too much at one time. This is a, a, a way to manage and balance things out, uh, in a responsible way, uh, over the next, you know, several decades, hopefully, uh, when we plan for, uh, infrastructure-type things, not necessarily equipment for that far. Uh, complete the fire, uh, be, uh, or two, complete the, the, uh, complete the fire station improvements within the project budget by November twenty twenty-five. We will not meet that goal, uh, by council, it's, it's gone to a, um, a committee, which is a good thing, but when it goes to committee, as you know, a lot of times it slows things down. Uh, November twenty twenty-six is a questionable goal at this point. Uh, unfortunately, uh, things take time, uh, but we are moving through them, uh, deliberately, uh, and making, we believe as the, as a whole, a group as a whole, the best decisions on how to spend, uh, that money. Part C, the town advocacy advocates on crumbling foundation issues. Uh, our foundations, uh, twenty, the, the corrected foundations have outpaced the, the new abatement. So basically twenty-two, uh, foundations came off our tax rolls, uh, and, uh, twenty have came out. So twenty were, twenty-two were repaired basically and twenty have shown, uh, that they need for repair. So that's a good sign that we're heading in the right direction. Uh, the important thing is the state of Connecticut continues to fund, uh, their funding obligations in, in, in regards to, uh, the foundation issue. So we're, we're in good shape with that, I believe it was a hundred million dollars they put into the account, uh, this year. The contaminated wells in town and addressing those concerns again, you know, we have a task force with that. Uh, we received money for deep to help the, the vineyards, we're going to look to, to trying some things to hopefully improve the water, water quality of some of the affected wells, uh, that we and our cons, and our consultant, uh, and, and deep believe is being caused by the, um, water softening systems. We have meetings coming up, they're scheduling this week for the, uh, Lakeview Heights area and it's the new people, the surrounding, there's, there's houses that have the, the water problems, houses surrounding them. Uh, we're going to bring them in for a meeting on ways they can help, uh, improve, uh, the well, well quali- quality of well water in that area. Build a sidewalk on the, pardon, build a sidewalk on the Talon Green. Uh, that is ongoing, uh, been here three years, that problem has lasted three years. Uh, we continue to, um, fight this in court, uh, as you know, there's been, uh, that, that, uh, plaintiff has filed a suit in the town, uh, stopping us from, uh, putting the sidewalk on the green. Uh, we are going to fight it, the, the legal cost is covered by Kerma thankfully. Uh, in regards to this effort, uh, to this point, there was an effort, uh, to dismiss the case, it was denied, uh, recently, uh, but we keep moving forward. Uh, continue to identify and address access, accessibility needs in public spaces throughout town. As you heard me say earlier, every project we build, be it a firehouse, be it a parks and rec building, everything we do, we try to push the needle. Uh, is it perfect? No, but we have made great improvements, uh, in the town of Talent in regards to accessibility. And we look between the sidewalks on the green, sidewalks hopefully connecting, uh, the green and our business district. Uh, we continue to look for accessibility in our parks, uh, we do the best we can, the crandles walkway that goes right down into the water. Now we've made some, uh, great improvements. Uh, promote sound recreational opportunities. So the, we use, uh, utilize the, uh, some of the ARPA money, which really, I believe, the way we used it with our recs department to help kids pay for camps, uh, I think was in the purest sense of the form, how that money should have been used to get people back out and, uh, active, uh, in, in, uh, programs essentially, and, and we were very successful. Our rec programs are run now, running strong, our camp is ongoing right now, drive-by crandles, you see it's full. Uh, we've done very well in that, I think that was a very responsible use of that. Attached, uh, to this, to that, to your council goals report is some data in regards to that. E, expand, uh, services offered by our recreation center. Uh, we've made major strides in, in expanding the variety of programs at the rec center. New initiatives, uh, new basketball, new pickleball, uh, dance, zoom beanie, uh, whatever that is and some other things, uh, we've, we've tried to expand. We have a recreation advisory board, I can be, we're going to get to that too, glad, in fact, that's, over to the next one. Our, we collaboration or a record advisory board has needed, our rec advisory board makes recommendations on, on many things. Uh, when we need a basketball court replaced, they make recommendations. When we need it, we went to them, we have so many fields in town, there had been no schedule of how we're going to replace them or up, update them. When I got here, I asked, uh, Bruce, our rec director in DPW, to get together with the rec board to come up with a schedule, planning out all the improvements or, you know, basically a field, a baseball field needs to be redone after so many years, basically planning out the improvements of all our fields over the next twenty years. Attached to your report is a timeline for that. The first, uh, field up for, um, improvements is the, uh, women's softball field at the Talon Middle School that was done at the advisement with, uh, our athletic director and our, uh, superintendent, Dr. Willett, had asked, that was their, their greatest concern, uh, we get, we're going to do new fences, smooth out the field. They, we, we got a, uh, a new scoreboard up there too. Uh, so we, we've made some progress and you can see, we, we've listed out, um, some of the improvements, uh, moving forward. It's not just a cost thing, it's timing for DPW, as you can imagine, if we're going to rip up and place an infield and include a baseball field, it's a lot of work. We do that in-house and so there's a lot of scheduling, uh, and planning for materials and such and timing with the fields so that we don't lose, uh, like say a softball, the team doesn't lose a season because we're improving their field. So there's a timing aspect, that's all that's in consideration. And many thanks to the rec advisory board for assisting with that. Engage citizenry to become, uh, be, to be committed to the betterment of our entire community. Uh, A, in regards to a balance of open space, residential and economic development. Uh, you know, we're, we're doing everything I can, we have great, we have a great trail system. A conservation corps does a great job in maintaining the trails. Uh, you, we got them, a, we had a, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, a quad was purchased here in town, was not being utilized. Uh, that quad has been assigned to the conservation corps, uh, to help with their trail improvements. Uh, we're looking at making improvements at the Nafla Dam, uh, that we're having problems with beavers. We're looking for the most profitable way to do that, uh, that, you know, we require a grant to, uh, acquire the Talon Marsh that is, uh, currently moving forward, we'll look to establish trails there. We also have a kayak program, uh, that, that I think will really complement the Talon Marsh, uh, purchase, uh, very well. Uh, with that, support tourism and efforts to attract people in town, encourage residents to utilize the existing activities here in town. Uh, we try to promote, uh, everything that we have here in town. I thank Brenda Belluzzi for her efforts, uh, in promoting, uh, everything that she can, she, she does, I, I, she just does yeoman's work, that I'm so lucky to have her, that she, and she does it for nothing, uh, for free. And it's, you know, it's a thankless job, we have the Talon Green, our farmer's market's doing fantastic. Uh, our harvest fest is improving, our memorial day parade is improving. Uh, a lot of positive things, uh, happening here in town, our, our, um, our, uh, tree lighting, uh, night on the green, and we've made some, some really good changes in regards to getting that, getting, uh, our residents, uh, to use the facilities. As you heard a resident say earlier, he's driving by, he's seeing kids out using our basketball courts, the pickleball courts have been incredibly, uh, successful. C, improving transparency and communication to the public regarding the town, uh, budget. Uh, we hear this a lot, uh, we maintain this, the, the same level of transparency throughout the years, through these years, a difficult budget process. We use ClearGov, which is by all recommendations what we should be using. ClearGov, uh, it provides a tremendous amount of detail that can be, that is accessible to the public. Uh, we include a tremendous amount of information on the town's website as well, especially the finance department. Uh, our new finance director has already made some improvements. Uh, again, she came into this year's budget process midway, she looked, she is going to look to make a, a lot of improvements on our, on our budget book, uh, and our transparency and, and accessibility, uh, for that information to residents. Uh, use of the recommendation, the mental health task force to infer, uh, informed service offerings from humans, uh, human service. Uh, use of the recommendation, the mental health task force to infer, uh, informed service offerings from humans, uh, human services office. They, we, I believe we employed every recommendation uh made by the health, uh, by that task force and and it has been uh very successful. Uh. Track human services offerings to support uh town residents, identify unmet needs, basically our senior center. Uh, youth prevention council or uh various other states programs, look, it's like um our food pantry. Our, you know, our, our support for the needy, our housing, uh, the help for people with affordable, affording housing. Uh, our, our senior, or our, our human services department does an amazing job uh with that. And uh, we've, we obviously received a lot of uh positive feedback in regards to both of those. Uh, provide opportunity again for community engagement, I try to be as forward-facing as I can, as positive I can, I try to go to every single community event and try to get people to go. Um, I stop at basketball games, football games, softball games, lacrosse, everything, uh, and try to promote it. Our PCC has been revamped, our per, public, uh, so permanent celebration committee has been revamped and recharged. The new members, I thank them so much. Uh, as you know, basically, at all our members leave at the same time. Uh, our new members have, um, especially Trish Feim, the chair, has done an amazing job in getting everything up and running. Uh, we've had very successful events under the new uh PCC. Review and develop policies and activities to support inclusivity and unity for a safe and welcome environment for all town residents. Uh, we work closely and try to maintain uh positive relationships with our CO, uh, COPWD. Uh, P flag veterans and other groups and try to hear their concerns. Uh, we enjoyed, we, we recently joined other towns, when I got here, Juneteenth was not recognized by the town of Talon. Uh, we, we do now recognize that, and the, the menorah lighting uh is the largest in our region. That's something that, that I personally spearheaded, coming from previous relationships uh when I was with the state. Uh, and then there's, if you look through, there's a list, basically, of our human services, the library, our talent use services, um, and and many of the uh great things that they are doing. Foster a positive community facilitated through civic, civic engagement and town sponsored events, again, our PCC. Uh, and I, and myself, we try to do as much as we can and council as well, and I thank you all, if you march in the parade, if you show up for the tree lighting. Um, if you order it on social media, I thank you all, uh, you guys certainly have um done that. With that, I'll take questions.
Thank you, town manager Foley, um, are there questions or comments for town manager?
Brian, you elaborate how you. Um, formed a collaboration with Cardinal Engineering in comparison to, I believe you said you kind of was looking at drafting um a concept plan. Uh, for the new sidewalks along one ninety-five, um, extending to the town green that I organized.
Uh, so yeah, we, we, we wanted to go out for a grant to, um. We would never build a sidewalk on our own, from the green to the, to the, the business district, we simply couldn't afford it. So we, we tried to get it, I believe it's a low SIP grant uh that we were going after for it. Um, in order to do that, you need to have an engineered plan, best case scenario for the state. You have an, you need to have an engineer uh plan in the can, ready to go, basically. And so, um, when I got here, uh, we had to, we switched engineering firms. We, we basically went to two separate engineering firms based on uh their specialties or what we're trying to achieve. This, we thought cardinal engineering would be the best. A resident town, Dr. Eric Jackson, works at the highway safety up at the coordination with DOT up at the University of Connecticut. He offered to have his engineering students also mirror a design as well. Uh, at the same time, at no cost to the town, it was an exercise for them. Um, and they hit it out of the park, you know, our, our project manager went up there and looked at it and and they did, he did a great job. Um. We will use that, you know, for anything that, that we can use to improve our cardinal uh engineering part. Uh, but right now, we have made no decisions, we have a lot of, we have a lot of great engineering input. Uh, we haven't made any decisions until we just, till we're gonna get the grant or we're looking to move forward the grant. You know, is it gonna be on one side, the sidewalk gonna be on one side, it's gonna be on both sides. Um, those are all decisions that, that go down the road, but our engineering is moving forward. I believe it was, this is guessing, um, Alex, I wasn't prepared for that specific, I knew it was about eighty thousand, I think, to, to engineer it, I could be wrong.
Okay, do we have a outlook on that, why?
No, it's, it's entirely dependent on getting grant money.
Okay.
From the state, and we don't know whether we're gonna get it or not. And, and let's say we don't get it, it's in the can, and we'll apply for it the year after, and the year after, the year after, unless something else rears its head uh moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Merely.
I have a call.
Sir Bee.
Um, so number one, thank you very much for the ordinance sixty flyer in the tax bills. Um, I noticed it, but I have my tax bill, um, and anything else that we can do to add that information, um. Is greatly appreciated and endorsed, um, but I wanted to, I, I actually made a note of that. Um, the, with respect to the well water quality, um, would it benefit? The townspeople to have some kind of educational flyer on possibly on the impact of the water softening system? So people could understand the possible impact to groundwater?
Yes.
broadly?
Yes.
And is there something that we can do to help facilitate that?
I believe we did.
Okay.
We already did that. Um, I'm happy to get that too, it was before you were here.
Okay.
At least in the affected areas, I think.
Yeah, in the affected areas.
So I'm, I'm thinking a lot of people didn't know, right? They, like, people aren't thinking about this, they don't know, I'm doing what I'm told to do, I put the system in, my water has iron, manganese, or both in it, and. They don't know where it's going.
So that information was not something the town would put out, that is something for Eastern Highlands.
Okay.
District to, to put together with, with, in cooperation with our consultant, which they did. However, that is, you know, not foolproof.
Yep.
Which is why I wrote a letter.
Yep.
To our uh state legislators, um, asking them to come up with some formalities here in regards to water softener system. Some legislation that says you can't get a water softener unless you meet this level or that level, just some rules around it.
Yep.
Cause it is as defined by our attorney involved in this, the Wild West out there for water.
It is.
And, and so we hope to see legislation, we, we've, uh, we've brought in the, the state department of public health. They were not involved in the process, they very much need to be involved in, in this process, statewide issue. Um, and we're starting to see by all data that it, that is not road salt, that is the water softeners uh very clearly causing the problem in most areas. Looking, Coventry had an issue, you know, with the neighbor next to the salt shed, you know, that's not exactly who done it there. Um, and, and other issues have, you know, we, we previously had it even in town here, right by our salt shed. Really by the, the highway garage, you know, in the old days, we would dump salt. The drivers would dump all the, all post to get rid of it as they're coming in at the end of the storm.
Right.
Uh, and you saw elevated salt levels there, that has obviously been uh discontinued, we do the best practices. And as recommended by the University of Connecticut, DEEP, we are very conservative with our salt application. When compared to uh the other towns, and I would argue that when compared to the state as well. Um, open to debate, but we, we are doing everything we can to ensure that it is not the salt that is affecting our residents' wells.
So, and, and I appreciate that, um, and I'm thinking that, that the average person. Who is installing a filter and is still on a well, may not realize that that is pumping directly into the groundwater, that then they are taking their well water from.
Yep.
Um, so that's, that's sort of public education.
So we would like, we would like Eastern Highlands to send them that information, anytime someone i- is doing that. We would also like, we, in, in, in a perfect world, the companies that are doing it themselves would provide that information as they're selling it, hence the need for the legislation.
Understood, totally understand that. Um, sidewalk on the green, just to clarify, we did have a previous lawsuit we were involved in, that I believe was settled in our favor, or that we, was.
Correct.
Decided in our favor.
Correct.
So this is a different lawsuit.
This is the second, and within, within a week or two, they refiled another lawsuit, um, the same people.
Under different terms.
Different terms, and, you know, a few people were, a few people stepped away, you know, you had had the red and white on that one.
Yep.
Uh, they were off, but some of the other people, so, um, there was those types of slight changes. However, the way they worded that lawsuit, uh, implied damages to the town of Talon. When damages were applied to the town, potentially applied to the town of Talon, that um enacted KERMA. Uh, initiated KERMA to defend us, because they're, they're our insurance carrier, they provided an attorney. Our attorney, Rick, still keeps a, a loose eye on it, but we, he and I are both very happy with our representation.
Okay.
Uh, in.
And I just wanted to make that clear, because it's been a long process, that we actually successfully, we're successful on one litigation, but now we are, have been.
Yep.
Dragged into another one, okay. Um, thank you, Yolita, for looking at other possible or suggestions for um making budget details and communications um better. Anything we can do there is wonderful. Um, I did, um, then, then my final thing was, you said we were close to losing our triple A bond rating. Do we ha, have we received correspondence from our rating agency, Fitch, that we should be looking at?
Yes, we received a lot, you know, they, I think the main issue was they changed their rating criteria last year. Uh, we did receive that, and I'm happy to get that to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
What the changed criteria was. Um, and how it impacts the town of Talon, I really went through that in a few council meetings uh as well.
All right, okay.
But.
That's in the back, it's in the back.
Oh, it's in the back, okay.
It's in the back.
And uh, I'll just say, if we, that's, that's, we did have a meeting about it, I think it was probably before your time early, um. But we haven't been notified from the rating agency or anything like that, that we're beginning to put on notice or anything, that our, our.
Yes.
Rating is dropping, but the criteria has changed, but.
I'm constantly nervous for.
But, but, so, is, this is the rating criteria breakout that we have in Phoenix?
Yes, and Barry was on the call just to, if, if there's any questions to talk about it, but he, he left the call.
Okay, so I, so we can, I'm not gonna belabor this like right now tonight, that obviously we can. Or I can, I can request, you know, through the chairs, I can request um additional details, thank you. Um, and just wanted to make sure that if there was a. Correspondence from Fitch that indicated that we were in danger of losing our bond rating, that we were made, that we were made aware of that.
No, it was more correspondence from our advisors saying, this is gonna be close this year.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just.
Again, go ahead.
Uh, just respect to the uh contaminated wells issue, um, I just wanna, I know. A lot of what we do on that happens, you know, the town does a ton of work on that, and then at the council levels that happens in like a. Um, task force, occasionally the whole council gets executive session updates, so.
Yep.
Unfortunately, those are things that aren't always um super visible because of the nature of the work that we have to do. I'll say that, um, I think the town has done an excellent job of, you know, really, really trying to, to engage with residents to, um. You know, address water softening systems, I think our, um, our engineer.
Why don't you just do that?
Yeah.
You know?
Like.
Like, like, and, and, and our, our attorney that's doing it, we're doing an excellent job, um, and, uh.
It's solution-based, what we're doing is really, it's not just, we're not just saying. Your contaminated wells aren't the town's fault, none of that, none of that, this is, you know. We're providing solutions, this is, we, we think this would help if you did X, Y, and Z, and it's, it's more of a partnership with the homeowners, um, to try to look at those solutions.
Yeah, and that reminds me, so that, so I, since, for the last couple of years, I've been figuring in, when we hire state rep, and I know Brian has, or our state delegation, I should say, coming in. It would really be helpful to have some sort of state guidance on this, right, because the town, um, you know. Yard, like a health district, right, we have the HHD, that will help, but, um, you know, we have to care for, you know, what we say, what we, what we put out there for guidance. And so the more, if there could be state input, that would certainly be helpful, I think, um, just to put some sort of parameters around, uh, what's going on in the eastern.
And Eastern Highlands has been.
They have.
Amazing, uh, in their stepping up and really, you know, understanding the laws. Uh, they'll jump right at DPH, um, in our meetings, and so, so will I, uh, and I'll jump a deep too, uh. So I really thank Eastern Highlands, you know, they, they weren't always involved, they are so invested now, like I couldn't be happier.
All right. Uh.
Chair, I had a quick, quick question for.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's obviously the troubling to hear that we don't have crime stats, right, in trends, right?
Welcome to the sketch.
Yeah, yeah, I'm recent to hearing this, but, uh, um, so this is not at the resident trooper level, right? These stats are maintained like above, even at the higher than the troop C level?
A resident trooper would have access to that data.
They do, okay.
I'm sure if we have them. They would get us that data.
Yeah.
I wanna codify. And we have this data orderly provided to council in the town in an open manner, somewhat professional. Um, stat is the word in law enforcement land, it's, you know, there's so much data out there. Heat maps and, and just, just so much that can tell you where things happen and when, and, and, you know, like in Hartford, our, you know, our street robberies are gonna kick up at the end of. November, early December, people who, the robberies are gonna start happening, burglaries are gonna start happening, as people start trying to get money. You, you can predict certain patterns, um, and base your policing and patrol on those patterns, it's not rocket science. You know, if burglaries are happening between, you know, last ten years, between eleven and uh one AM. You know, maybe we should have some patrols and it would be these certain areas at those certain times, you know, cops and the dots is, is kind of the, the term. And we don't have, we don't get anything close to that. And they absolutely have a great program that could provide that to us very easily in the man, and in, in a manner of, once that. Data in that report is generated one time, it's a matter of clicking it again, once, every, once a quarter, to print it out again and provide us with that data for us to digest, how safe are we? Do we need four resident troopers? I don't know, John, you don't know either, no one here knows. Uh, do we need one, do we need none, do we need ten? We don't know, that's the bottom line, it's strictly based on perception, and the perception is, by the town, we need four resident troopers to remain safe. We went down to two a few years ago, no one noticed crime wasn't affected, or was it? We don't know, because we don't have any data to support that.
Yeah.
You think that they wanna provide that data to show that they are needed, uh, that they, but they are, they are fighting me on it, and then I'm happy to CC you on the emails. Um, I would love to have it.
And the reluctance is not from the resident troopers themselves.
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
No, this is again, depth, but, you know, legal affairs, you know, they have sixty-something resident trooper contracts. They don't wanna start making exceptions for one, and if they do it for one, they gotta do it for all, and that's a heavy lift, and, and it becomes, you know, but. It's stone ages, the, the prime data, but the data that we get from that is literally in the stone ages.
Yeah.
Uh, in regards to police work, and, and so they have the ability to do it, they just are reluctant to, because they would impact all the other towns and act.
If I could just add one thing, I'll say, uh, the town manager has done a good job of trying to push, but I mean, I think. Last, maybe, I think this went to the attorney general's office, they were trying to review it as part of our contract negotiations, so it's definitely, it's a, it's a, it's trying to navigate a bureaucratic. Process now, and, and I appreciate, you know, how much work the town manager's about to get this data, because we do need it, we don't know, we can't make informed decisions without it, so, um, it's definitely not for lack of. Yeah, trying.
I can't go one mile over the speed limit, you know, right now, so I can drive safely, I'm sure a lot of people would take it, but it's all fine.
Uh, and the only other comment that I have is, so the, the ARPA, the, um, the town garage that was using the ARPA funds, that's the one on cider mill?
Yes.
Okay, and how are we planning on using that, how the DPDW is gonna store?
Uh, let me, let me preface with, I'm happy to give you a walkthrough of the old facility. And then, then you'll, you'll realize the need for said new facility. Um, it, it's storage, it's office space, um, it's lockers, uh, and a break area, uh, for them. It's, we have outgrown that other place, you know. The end of the year, you put all the lawn mowers away, you're in there and you take the, the snow lower it out, but you need a shoe horn to move, move things around in there, it gets so. Literally, when we go walk through, we're gonna be skinning, skinning sideways to get to back to see the guy that repairs everything, and he's underwater back there. And, and uh, the, the break room is above the chemical storage and, and the gas, and yes.
It's, it's water.
Yeah, smells delicious. So, um, it's time, and, and it was, you know, entirely funded uh by ARPA. And, and I think it's done a great job in getting it in on budget and under.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Interesting question about the sidewalk, um, since it's been a little bit of time since we've gotten into the legal details of that. When, can you remind me when the first lawsuit was settled and the second one was filed?
About a year and a, about a year ago, I'd say, uh.
Oh, okay.
So, we want, we're just for.
Sorry, yes.
They're, they're.
Your turn.
Yes. They're, they're, yes, tossed, um, and they filed it on.
That's an important correction, yes, okay.
Just, if I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, but it's been, this has been the current state of things for a while, okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yep, I'll just say, it seems like we've, we've accomplished a good deal of things, a lot of good progress over the past eighteen months. Um, obviously not everything, um, has been done, but certainly a lot of good progress, that's, that's exciting. All right, um, there's nothing. Alright, um there's nothing else on the council goal review. We can move to appointments, to vacancies. Um we have a number of them tonight. Uh Chris, do you wanna give us an overview here?
Sure, so uh I believe these are all reappointments. Um the first two are to the Talon Nonprofit Housing Corp. Um Steve Page and Edwin Lugo, um they've both already been serving in that, in that role. So we thank them for their continued um dedication to the town. Those are five-year terms. Um and so, you know, obviously the town, we've said it many times, could not operate without volunteers and so. Um we're appreciative for everyone that's willing to continue to continue their service. We also have four, the Ag Commission. Kevin Malloy, Stephen Lundgren, Sherry Sullivan, Ray Gudon. Um and so again, you know, we're appreciative that they've con- they've decided to continue to volunteer their time to help Talon. Um and as always, I will thank Sarah Beth for keeping us on the straight and narrow to make sure we um, you know. Fill vacancies when we reach out or to make sure that we renew uh terms before they expire, so um. Would recommend all the people to be reappointed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? So entertain a motion to um appoint the individuals listed.
So.
Second? Who, who seconded it?
John.
John did it? Alright, there we go. Alright, um any discussion? Alright, uh Council Noonan?
Hi.
Council Graney?
Hi.
Council Moran?
Hi.
Council BB?
Hi.
Uh see, Council Buckler?
She uh dropped off Jacob.
Oh, she did, okay, then I'm an I as well, so that passes unanimously. Alright. Um that moves us to old business, of which there's none, and then item ten, reporter, the town manager.
Great, thanks. I'll try to be brief considering what I just went through. Um. Again, I mentioned earlier, our Assistant Town Clerk is retiring. Uh that hiring process will be moving along quickly, I believe, this week or next. Our Animal Control Officer uh has resigned and presumed to opportunities. We have applications. I talked to the chief about. Um the selection process involves uh hiring the the next Animal Control Officer. Uh as you know, we hired, we're in the process of hiring a new Rec Director. Uh thank you to council for uh approving and moving forward with that. Uh if you don't know, we had a car stove in the front wall of the package store next to the old Jeff's popcorn there. Uh I wanna thank our building uh inspector who responded. And did everything he could to keep the business open and they did uh stay open. It was a brick walls, uh stove right in. He make, he's gonna make rec- recommendations for some uh reinforcements to prevent that uh moving forward, but they were, they were very thankful to be able to stay open. Uh our new pickleball court is open at the senior center. Seniors will have priority of using the pickleball court. It'll be open only to seniors during the day or during, I'm sorry, during senior center hours. When the senior center is not open, it's open to the uh general public as well. Uh that was paid for, I believe, by specific senior center tagged ARPA money and as well as some uh donations from senior, to the senior center. Uh here in town, so I thank the staff uh and at the senior center and Megan Moss for for getting that together. Uh I wanna thank DPW for getting two more speed signs uh here in town that we're gonna, we're gonna put out. Uh one of them will be on uh Old Post Road and one will be near the uh highway, uh no post road near the highway garage, so basically as you come down here. Uh into the the school zone. Um and I wanna thank the fire department and DPW for their, it crept up on us out of nowhere, the storm response on Thursday night. Uh for those of you who don't know, we had multiple uh outages, lines down, road blockages, like the five power lines. It resulted in road blockages, eight other locations where trees were down uh that were, were, that also blocked roads. You know, I talked about the promotions within DPW. Both people who promoted live here in Talon. Previously, those two positions were held by a Redfield resident and a Columbia resident. When I called DPW to see where we are with the storm, both were already in the field working, not to mention our director is also lives here in Talon, so we have. To have those uh to to the Assistant Director and the Highway Supervisor here in town. Uh responding before I can call, this has been the case since they've been promoted, before I can even ask for them, they're already out and doing things and going above and beyond. I thank them for their efforts. The Volunteer Fire Department did an outstanding job uh in responding that and and I, I. Following on the the dispatch notifications, there was an actual order of a call in for all available uh. Uh volunteer fire, firefighters to come in and and assist with the cleanup and the road uh blockages, which they handled. Uh very well, so it's a credit to uh Chief Laitel and Assistant Chief Dojin. Uh in their efforts uh in regards to that. Um. Moving along, give me one second. The. Talon New Services Community Theater, High School Musical, July twenty fifth and twenty six, tickets are now on sale online. You can reach out to my office for uh details on that. We've been promoting it as much as as possible. I. I have my tickets. I encourage town uh council to go and see uh what a great program this is. We have approximately a hundred and thirty kids. It's essentially run. Uh a hundred and thirty kids at the high school going through this uh musical, the volunteers. I thank them so much. If you, you have a moment, um step in and and see what's happening. It's, you can just see, it's such a positive environment, such good things for our kids um to be out there.
Any questions for Brian? Alright, not seeing any. Thank you, Brian. Um that brings us to item eleven, adoption of minutes. Um we have one set of minutes to approve the June twenty fourth minutes. Is there any corrections that need to be made to the minutes? Suppose I'll ask for a motion to adopt the minutes.
Subdued.
Moved by Council BB, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, alright, um any discussion? Alright, um we'll go around the room, Council Noonan?
Hi.
Council Graney?
Hi.
Council Moran?
Hi.
Council BB?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, so those minutes are adopted. Alright, um correspondence to council, so. Counselor Utecheck was um in charge of this, so that role is currently vacant. Um so I don't think we have correspondence to council unless a member of town staff prepared. Or correspondence.
I'll ju- I'll just say, Jacob, um.
Yeah.
Uh Counselor Graney and I will, will talk about that, make sure that that gets um covered. Um also, we're, you know, just for the, you know, for the public, we are transitioning to Office three sixty-five, so um we're all just sort of mind reading over this fact, so. I did recently get into that. Um I don't recall off the top of my head anything, but I will, I'll go back and look.
Yeah. No, that that's actually, yeah, a good point for public awareness. Response might be a little slow from council. Um given that transition. Alright, um. Brings us to chairman's report. Um I don't really have, have anything. Um guess I'll just again say thank you to all the town staff that has responded to the storms. Um I'm sure there'll be more summer thunderstorms, so um everybody stay safe and. Um enjoy some time off if uh that's your plan over the next couple of months. Um and again, um congratulations, uh Council Graney on getting appointed to the council. I look forward to working. Working with you and um. Uh. Working on on finishing up the goals for this term.
Thanks.
Okay, um communications and petitions and council persons. Council Moran?
Uh I'll just, once again, reiterate uh our thanks to for bringing for stepping up. Uh looking forward to working with him along as well as the rest of the council. Um also, uh thanks to town staff for everything they did in the storm. Um and also definitely thinking of everyone in Texas that's. Been affected by the plague and all that's going on, so um. Yeah, so just giving those people uh thoughts as well.
Absolutely. Alright. So we got a quiet, nice quiet crowd, July eighth. Um anybody else? Alright, we'll move on to uh last business item of the night. Um public participation, this time with a three-minute limit on any subject. Uh I see TDTC has raised their hand, assuming that's the Democratic Town Committee, but I don't know the name.
I'm new TDCC.
Yes, thank you, Jacob.
Yeah, oh. Uh he was muted again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Perfect. Uh Chrissy Menez, sixty-eight Anthony Road, Chair of the Talon Democratic Town Committee. Um I would like to start by uh reading the the letter that the town committee um. Uh gave to the town clerk. Uh the Talon Democratic Town Committee convened for a meeting to consider the vacancy on the Tal- Talon Town Council resulting from the. A recent recognition of Councilor Utecheck. At this meeting, the committee unanimously voted to endorse unaffiliated resident John Graney to fill the vacant seat. Mr. Graney has expressed a strong commitment to public service and to the values of our community and we can, uh we are confident that he will serve the town council with dedication. And integrity, sincerely the members of the Talon Democratic Town Committee. Uh additionally, uh uh the committee would like to congratulate Councilor Graney on his appointment to the Talon Town Council. His thoughtful leadership and collaborative spirit, passion and passion for making a difference for all residents. Will be a tremendous asset to the council and we look forward to the positive impacts John will make in the new role. Congratulations, Councilor Graney. Uh I would also like to take this moment uh like uh Council Moran uh mentioned. Uh that our our thoughts and prayers are with the communities in Texas uh that are devastated by the recent floods. And our hearts are with the families who have lost loved ones, homes and livelihoods. In times of crisis, we are reminded of the importance of unity and compassion and we hope for a swift recovery and that they receive the resources that they need to rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I'll go to the room. Can't tell if that was a hand from George or if he was just. What was that?
So far, no.
Okay, alright, uh then I'll go to uh Ms. Galishant online.
Yeah, hi there, Jen Galishant, one fifty Timber Trail. I just also wanted to congratulate uh John Graney on his unanimous appointment to the town council tonight. I've personally known John a long time and as both a parent and a volunteer, I am so appreciative. He is willing to step up and fulfill this role. Something I know he takes very seriously. Um I have been impressed with his informed, respectful and passionate advocacy for our community and our school district over the years. And I have complete faith that he will be a strong addition to this council, who is committed to doing the hard work needed to inform his decision-making for our town. As a B O E member, I very much look forward to working with him in this new capacity. Congratulations, John, and congratulations to our town council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Alright, um I think John is, or George is the only one in the room, so I'll go, I guess I'll go online one more time. Or open it up to anyone. Alright, seeing none, um I'll entertain, or I'll just do it the fast way. Is there any objection to adjournment at eight forty-six PM? Alright, seeing none, uh we are adjourned at eight forty-six PM.